I would like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed. But first, I have to give you a notification. Okay, this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local cable access, on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to your Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. First, I'd like to introduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezikowski, Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, and Patrick Callahan. The way the hearing will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they may have on the application while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first petition.
This is an application for a special permit, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Maxi Auto Sales Inc., 40 Summer Street, in Lunenburg, Mass. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows: Seeking a special permit to sell 50 automobiles. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 46310. The street address is 40 Summer Street in Lunenburg, Assessors Map 115, Parcel 7. The name and address of the holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Kelly Brothers LLC, 54 Southered Road in Worcester, Mass. 01463. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. September 2009, Valentine's Auto was approved for 20 vehicles. February 2014, Best Auto was approved for 20 vehicles. May 2012, Double Down was approved for 50 vehicles. I think there were another dealership after that. The special permit questions and answers are as follows: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: Absolutely not. As a responsible business owner of a used car dealership engaged in prudent business practices with a good neighbor policy, there is no scenario whereby the public would be exposed to an unduly hazardous situation. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: Know the proposed use of this property as car dealership is consistent with the lot's history and characteristics of the neighborhood. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use? The response: Yes, all operations will be consistent with prudent business practices, including a good neighborhood policy. And D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines? It amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The response: Absolutely not. The actions described in this section are clearly not consistent with the town's guidelines or my policies and therefore would not be allowed. There is a memo here from Kelly Brothers LLC, 40 Summer Street, who is the property and landowner at 40 Summer Street, hereby authorized Tatiana Oliveira da Silva of 60 Candlewood Drive in Leamester, Mass. 01453 to apply for a special permit through the town of Lunenburg for the proposed use at the above location. Attached is a site plan of the proposed layout of the cars. There's a certified list of abutters, all that were notified on July 3, and an assessor's map. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come up and address the petition.
Hi. Good night. My name is Tatiana Oliveira da Silva. I am 41 years old. I live in Leamester. Jeanne stay here with, help me in translator because my English is... I'm in process. Okay.
I ask permission to speak in her favor? I ask permission to speak in her favor. My name is Jeannie and I'm here to help her with the translation.
Yeah, that's fine. Just give your name and address, please.
Sure. So it's Jeannie Miranda. That's J.E.A.N.E. Last name is Miranda, M.I.R.A.N.D.A. The address is 355 White Pond Road, Lancaster, Massachusetts, 01523.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything at this time you would like to add to the petition or other information you would like to give to the board?
Is there something you would like to add? Do you want to tell us what happened at the beginning?
Yes.
Yes? You can start. I'll translate for you.
Okay.
Say it in Portuguese.
I am speaking Portuguese. X, translate.
In February.
In February 2024. Was... Yes. The company had two associates, Sidney and José Illes.
The business had two owners, Sidney and José.
José Illes was leaving the company.
So José decided to leave the partnership.
Yes. And he left on April 1.
On April 1, he left.
As an investor,
so I came in as an investor.
I'm pleading for the building's license.
And now I'd like to take sole ownership of the business. They are no longer involved in the business. So she's applying to be sole owner of the dealership.
I paid a lot of money to start this business. And now I'm taking over all operations.
How much did you invest?
I invested approximately $150,000.
So I have invested $150,000 that I have taken as a mortgage towards my house.
And from June 5, I'm responsible for all situations, with the rental contract, starting a new business, doing everything new to get the license and be in front of all operations.
So I have done everything I needed to do in terms of documents, signed everything with the lease of the building. So I have taken up every action to do everything right so I could be the owner of this dealership.
So I would like to have an opportunity to reopen Maxi Auto.
So I'm asking you today for the opportunity to begin this business on my own. Max Auto is what it's called, what it's going to be called.
And I'm resolving all the burdens that remained in the past, all the clients that felt injured.
I already feel responsible for every single problem that they had from the time of February that I came into this partnership. And I am already resolving a lot of problems on my own even though I still don't have the license. But I'm dealing with issues that were created since February through now.
And resolving everything that happened, resolving all the situations, and being in front of the business.
Because I feel responsible for this business because my name is in the business.
This business, last year, it sold approximately 400 cars.
Last year, this dealer sold about...
400?
400 cars. Approximately.
Yes. At the beginning of this year, after I started taking the front, which was from April, there were a lot of things that didn't align.
In April, after working with them since February through April, I could see a lot of things that I didn't think was right.
I talked with Sidney and José.
And then I sat down with them, with Sidney and José, and we discussed what was happening in the dealership.
So they could resolve the past situations, but I was standing in front of the situation to be resolved because I didn't want any client to be injured.
Because I felt like some of the clients were being hurt by the way they were doing the business. So from now on, I decided to do my best because I don't want to cause any problems through the clients that are coming to the business. Is there anything else you want to say?
Okay. Okay, just to make things a little clearer for me. Currently, the lot is empty.
Now it's empty.
The class two license and the special permit that we originally gave are both revoked.
Yes. And the licenses that you had before were revoked.
Yes, correct. Yes, I understand.
I believe the last applicant, was it March 11, 2022? Do you know? Yes. And that was, I believe, to...
In March of 2022 was the last time we took...
José Iris de Oliveira Junior?
José de Oliveira.
Yes.
So as you're well aware, these licenses and the special permit were revoked because of fraudulent business practices at your location.
This business was fraudulent, so it was revoked.
Yes.
So what I would ask you, you're keeping the name Maxi Auto.
You're going to keep the same name?
Correct?
Correct.
She wanted to keep the same name.
And I'm just wondering, is... To keep that name, is there still a business? Is that under an LLC? Is that owned and operated under an LLC?
Is that the type of business that you have there? Is it still under an LLC?
Yes.
And currently, right now?
And now it's still under an LLC?
So what names are on that LLC?
What's the name of the company?
Maxi Auto, Auto Sale.
Okay. Who is it again?
Maxi Auto, Auto Sale. It was Lunenburg, now it's Maxi Auto, Auto Sale.
Now it's Max Auto.
Who is the supervisor of the maintenance? What... Who are the personnel that are named on that LLC?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The names of the people that are part of the LLC?
What's the name of the company when you start a business?
Yes, Maxi Auto.
But who is the owner? Who is the owner?
Now it's just her name.
Just your name? There's no other names on it?
No, just me.
Okay, all right. So this is a new operation and you have...
This is a completely new operation.
Yes, completely new.
With new employees.
New people.
Okay, you have no affiliation now with the previous owner?
You don't have any connection with the previous owners?
No.
The owners themselves? I have none.
Because of course there were some people that were, or said they were owners of it, that a special permit, when we grant it for a car lot, it's only to ensure the benefit of the applicant, which in this case goes all the way back to Olivia here. I'm probably mispronouncing it. But as Maxi Auto, and shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to any other party. And I believe there was another party in between, correct?
Did you say José? Did you say José the name?
Yes, yes. That was the last official one on the special permit here.
Because the last time they looked, it said that only José was the owner of the company.
Yes.
But it seems like another person also entered. And they didn't even have the documents of that other person.
It was Sidney.
She's aware of the second person as well, that was involved.
Okay.
But she did not know that all this confusion, all this illegal situation, she wasn't aware of any of this.
Okay, and she wasn't... If you weren't aware of the conditions of the special permit, and I mean, one of the other things that we always read is that your special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. Were you aware of those as you were still part of this?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that in small parts so I can translate to her?
The small part?
Yes.
I think...
No. Just repeat what you just read so I can translate.
Oh, I'm reading it too fast.
It was too fast for me to translate. I apologize.
Okay. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses.
So the applicant, this term, it has a term for you to take the license, right? So this term is saying that what is being given to you for the business is in line with the laws and regulations. Okay?
Yeah, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal.
Everything that is applicable to a local law.
Okay.
And all boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises.
And all agencies that involve the premises.
Were you aware of those?
You knew when you entered the company. You knew what was included in the contract.
Yes, I did.
But you knew that there were laws and regulations that were fraudulent.
No, I didn't know that. I only knew after the business closed.
Okay. She's saying that she... I think she's saying that because she knew some of what was implied in the business, but some of the details she wasn't aware. I think she was being naive and she trusted whatever they told her.
Okay. And what is your actual background in auto sales?
I'm asking about your experience in car sales.
I worked in Brazil for 15 years.
As the general manager of a bank, Central Drive in São Paulo.
I've been here for approximately 8 years. I worked in two dealerships. With FNAI.
Is that a seller? What is FNAI?
FNAI is part of the administration.
Like the administration part of these stores.
And I work here. I have a post-graduation in administration, in finances.
I have studied finances and I have a post-graduation in finances as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just need to improve my English, as she's saying. I'm getting there. She's learning. It's just not perfect yet, but she has... She is an educated woman.
Okay, thank you. I'm opening up to the rest of the board for their questions.
Where there were only 20 spaces or sales spots for many years, and then increased to 50, and your lack of experience in selling cars per se, why are you asking for 50 and not just 20 to start?
And not just 20 because you don't have enough experience to sell 50.
No, I requested 50 cars because it's a big lot.
It's a big lot, that's why I requested 50.
And previously, the license was for 50, so I maintained it.
And the license that they had stated, they said that it was for 50 cars, so I just kept the same number.
Can I do a follow-up to that? I'm going to do a follow-up. The reason we allowed 50 at that time, and I remember this, talking to the previous, that he had said they were going to... I know that there was like a muddy area, it was in the spring over there. There was a muddy area to one side, the other side was a little... He had said that he was going to tar those areas, asphalt them. That has not been done. So I will agree with Jim that I think the 50 cars at this point, because that was never done, should be brought down to begin with.
So...
And I'm not sure 20, but we'll discuss it with the board. Maybe it's 30 or 35, but we'll discuss that.
So that's the problem. He promised that he would asphalt the area and he never did. He never cared for the area. It was full of... The area wasn't proper.
Okay, I don't see any problem to going back to 20 if that's what it takes for me to get the license.
Okay, like I say, depending on where this goes, we'll see.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Jim?
I just have a few questions. So the applicant, she's only been in the car business since February with...
You started in the car business in February, right? Yes, I came in in February in the business with them.
And I noticed that... So first of all, I'm a little disturbed about the whole police report stuff that was going on down there. We haven't had issues like that before.
It was very complicated with the police reports.
I'm noticing that Sidney Fernandez de Souza had an address in the police department, someone's report, at 60 Candlewood Drive. It's the same address that the applicant has. What's the relation there?
What's the relationship with Sidney?
He is the father of my daughter.
Okay. But he has no... He has no affiliation with the business?
We are never married.
Okay.
There is no connection now. And now, and it's just me and my daughter.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
David?
So I'm a little confused as to...
I'm confused.
What is the relationship between... And is there a relationship between yourself and José?
Where did you meet?
We were friends. In fact, I... With his wife.
I went to school with his wife.
I know José for about 5 years.
So I've known him for about 5 years.
And we were friends. And that's why I trusted him and I invested all this money in this business.
Is there knowing what Maxi Auto and the reputation it has?
Knowing that Max Auto has a terrible reputation.
Is there... What is the reason for wanting to keep the name?
Why do you want to keep this name?
Because when it was revoked, what happened, I'm even here with the contract that I made a very high investment, putting my house as a guarantee.
I have invested a lot of money. Like I said, I have taken a second mortgage to do this.
And when I entered the store in April, when I started acting,
and then when I came in April, that's when I actually became active in the company.
And when it closed in June, I entered in despair.
Then in June, I became desperate. My house, I'm going to lose my house. All of the money invested.
And I entered with the documentation, so I ended up thinking about the name.
So I started right away. I reapplied right away. And I would love to change the name, but I haven't... I didn't think about it and I haven't had time to really apply for a new name.
I went to the accountant and I didn't know that all this was going on with a lot of reports. So after I had paid...
I wasn't aware of all these reports and I already had given them my money.
I had paid to open the new company, the new contract.
So I had already given them the money, we're going to do everything brand new.
I gave the approval to the city manager. So I would really like to change the name. Because this name isn't...
I understand the name right now doesn't have a good reputation.
And so the other question for me is, I'm trying to understand timelines here.
I'm sorry, trying to understand.
I'm trying to understand the timeline here, okay?
He's trying to understand the sequence of time here.
You, as explained by the chairman, the special permit or the permit for the business is only for the person whose name is on there.
Because the permission of the employee, the permit that you have, is only given to the person with the name on the permit.
So when they sold the business, when they sold a portion of the business to you?
When they sold a part of the business to you?
Why was that... Why were you not added or requesting at that time to be added to the special permit?
Why didn't you ask for your name when you put your money there? Is it because you trusted your boyfriend?
Yes. Because when I was a investor,
because I became like a partner, but more like an investor at first. Was just, was more like an investor.
I invested my money. So I went there once or twice, but I didn't know what was going on.
I go there every now and then, you know, to see how things were going, but I trusted them and I wasn't aware of everything that was happening there. So you didn't go there all day?
No, I didn't. I didn't even go there. I just spoke to them.
So I invested my money, but I would not go there every day. I would go every now and then to see how the business was going, trusting them.
Do you have any paperwork explaining this?
Do you have a bill of sale for the business? Do you have a... Yes.
Can you produce that?
You have a contract that...
Some kind of contract that says that this is...
Some contract that you made with them, saying that you gave them this money to be partners with them.
Yes.
Is it this one?
No.
No. You don't have it with me. She doesn't have it here with her, but she can bring it to you guys. She has a contract.
No further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, David. Patrick?
I would just add that I looked up on the Secretary of State's website that she is the only listed owner for the corporation, I should say. So just for whatever that's worth.
Could I ask one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course you can.
All right, so if I understand it correctly, the applicant was in business with previous partners?
You had an involvement with these previous owners.
They have since left the business.
And they left the business.
And the applicant is going to take over the business because she's got a lot of money invested in it, correct?
E você tá querendo assumir o business porque você investiu muito dinheiro no business?
Sim, correto.
So she wants to run the business to recoup the business and recoup her money?
Sozinha, sim, manter o meu dinheiro porque eu investi tudo.
Yeah, because I invested money that I did not have and I put it on my house, everything that I had was invested in this business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I'm just gonna ask a couple more questions just to see, to satisfy my mind. When you buy or get autos from the auction, is that where most of your cars are gonna come from?
I'm sorry, just a sec. No, let me translate, otherwise I'll lose you, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Quando, ele quer entender o que você tá falando. Quando você compra os carros, você vai no leilão e compra seus carros.
So when you go to, and you buy your cars, please continue.
Okay, so, but she gets her cars from an auto auction, correct?
Você compra seus carros numa, num leilão, certo?
Certo. Yes, correct.
And I'm not sure how exactly that works, but I know that.
Eu não sei como isso funciona.
Do you get them on lease, loan? Do you have to purchase them from them?
Como que você paga por esses carros? Você compra eles financiados, você compra eles no dinheiro, como é que é?
Sim, alguns carros...
Some of the cars...
São comprados, tem um four plan, né, banco?
Through a bank.
A gente aplica um four plan.
We apply, apply for a plan with the bank.
E compra os carros no leilão.
So we buy the cars in this auctions.
In este four plan.
And it's included in this, in this plan that we have with the bank.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking this because a lot of the, some of the issues that were down there were cars without titles. And I'm wondering how you get the cars on the lot when you have no titles?
Tinha documentos.
Sim, correto. Eu tive ciência disso depois que fechou.
I, I became only aware of that after they closed the business.
conversei com o José Iris e com o Sidney pra que eles estão resolvendo essas situações.
And I have talked to both my, my ex-partners and they are, they are fixing some of the situations.
Okay, so when you, when you, you take over, if it goes through, and you take over, you will be financing the cars that you bring to your lot through your bank?
Você vai tá financiando esses carros através do seu banco?
They will all come with titles?
Eles vão todos vir com, com...
Sim, todos, todos vir, todos legalizados, todos com...
They're all gonna be with the titles and...
Okay, and will they all be?
In a legal order.
Will they all be?
Também vou comprar com recurso próprio alguns carros.
And I also will...
Eu não vou usar cem por cento do banco porque...
And I'm also trying not to get more money from the bank, but to use some personal things that I have to invest more money in the company.
Yes, porque foi a parte administrativa que não teve, a má administração...
Because I believe it was not well, the administration of the company was not done properly.
Okay, all right. And those cars will all be ready for inspection, correct?
E esses carros vão tá pronto pra ser inspecionados?
Sim, com certeza.
Absolutely.
Eu vou fazer tudo...
I will do everything I can.
Conforme as leis.
According to the law.
Não, não vou admitir que nada seja fora da lei.
I will not admit anything being done without being regulated.
Okay, thank you.
Até por isso que eu conversei com os antigos sócios, que todos os clientes lesionados, eles devem ser...
One of the things we're trying to do is all the clients that were hurt, we're trying to fix the situation, their situations and, and get them reimbursed.
Eles me passaram que eles foram na polícia, né?
Os clientes?
Não, que os, os antigos sócios foram na polícia.
The, the old owners, they have gone to the police station as well.
Pra resolver as situações perante todos os reportes que...
To see what they can do about the reports to fix it with the clients.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else they would like to ask?
Just, just one last question. I know you talked about not having fifty cars.
Eu sei que você falou a respeito não tendo cinquenta carros.
But how many cars would you like to get the business up and running?
Pra você começar a mover o business, quantos carros você precisa, quantos carros você quer?
Não, pode ser vinte carros já pra mim como, um small, eu quero um small business pra que eu consiga administrar.
I can start with twenty.
E não ter muitos funcionários e eu ficar à frente de todas as situações.
This way I don't have to hire a lot of people to help me and I can be more hands-on.
Porque o business, ele tava muito grande e acabou perdendo.
Because the business was too big and I think that's what caused so many problems to them.
Então, eu prefiro começar...
So maybe I, I should start small.
Okay. Did you have a number in mind on?
I mean, I, obviously, if, if she's granted the permit, we want her to be successful. I just was wondering whether, I mean, I think fifty is too many.
I think so too. Like I say, they didn't do what they said to allow at fifty.
Right, yeah. But I can't hold that against the applicant because the applicant...
Ele quer que você seja sucesso no seu business, ele...
Well, why don't I, why don't we go back? We'll make a motion and then we'll, we'll condition the cars.
If she starts at twenty, she can always come back and ask for more in the future, in a short period of time. You know, so without prejudice or anything like that, something. I have one other question. Have you thought or are you planning on adding anyone else to the corporation, the business, to help you in managing or sales other than someone who might be a salesperson?
Pra ajudar você na, no business além de ter vendedores?
Não, na gestão, eu quero ficar sozinha, eu quero...
If you're asking if I wanna partner, I don't wanna have any partners. I wanna do it, this on my own.
Eu quero administrar sozinha, assinar tudo sozinha, fazer...
I wanna be the only person in charge of the company to administer and, and take care of the company.
Eu quero, vou contratar uma boa pessoa pra me ajudar e gerente em buscar os carros.
Managers or people to go get the cars, drive the cars from the auctions to the, to the building, but...
Mas a parte financeira que eu domino, a parte de vendas eu também domino.
Ownership, I, selling, that's gonna be with me.
E vou contratar only, apenas uma vendedora.
I'm only gonna hire one salesperson.
E uma pessoa pra me ajudar a mover, a buscar os carros.
And another person to drive the cars for me. So only two more people.
Thank you.
Eu quero um business pequeno.
I wanna to start small.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a couple more questions?
You may.
Two more questions, duas más perguntas pra ela.
Where are you planning on getting the cars from?
De onde você vai buscar esses carros? Onde você vai buscar?
Eu vou comprar no leilão.
In an auction?
Sim, tem leilão em Belirica.
We have one in Belirica.
In Quincy.
In Quincy.
A maioria eu compro em leilão, e aí eu também estou fazendo...
I already know this, this auctions place.
Estou estudando carros de locadoras que eu já entrei em contato...
And I also have some agencies that I have, like rental cars agencies, that I have contacted them already to buy cars from them.
Okay. When you get cars from the auction?
Quando você pega carro do leilão?
It is always as is?
É, você sempre compra do jeito que vem?
It is always with a title?
Vem com, vem com título, né?
Yes.
Especially my experience has been, it's always with a title.
Porque pelo que eu sei, sempre vem.
Are you planning on any repairs or anything else to be able to make these cars roadworthy?
To make them more valuable?
No, to make them safe for the roads.
Okay. Então, quando você pegar esses carro, você planeja arrumar esses carro, consertar esses carros antes de você vender pra que ele seja mais seguro pras rotas, pras estradas?
Sim, com certeza, eu já vou fazer, eu vou fazer a parceria com uma pessoa pra fazer a parte mecânica.
I already have a mechanic person.
Pra já fazer toda a historia dos carros.
That will be inspecting all the cars.
Pra antes de colocar pra vender, que eles estejam pronto pra o cliente.
Before I show the scars to clients.
My other question will be relating towards the previous owner.
Agora, outra pergunta que eu tenho de falar é sobre...
Your previous partner. Have you discussed with them where these cars without titles came from?
Você já perguntou pro rapaz que era seu sócio de onde que esses carro tavam vindo, esses carros ilegais, que não tinham documentos?
Sim, os, na verdade, como funciona, esses carros...
Yes, in fact, they, they told me that these cars...
Eles foram comprado no four plan do banco.
Through the bank.
E o title, eles não, eles estão em posse do banco.
But the bank took possession of the titles of the cars.
Então, os taros não sumiram, eles estão, todos os taros dos carros que os clientes falaram que compraram, estão com...
From the clients that have bought them and did not get the titles because the bank took possession of them.
Só que eles estão tendo que fazer o pagamento desses carros pra poder pegar, pegar o title e regularizar pro cliente.
And so it can be regulated with the client.
Esta semana, eles conseguiram regularizar
So this week alone...
Quatro carros...
Four cars were...
Que eu estou em cima dessa situação, até porque eu quero abrir o business de uma forma sem nenhum problema.
They were able to fix up the situation of four cars with clients that had bought the cars from them.
All right, and so, and how many more do you have to, do you have to do to, do you know how many more that are needed to still be done?
Você sabe quantos mais carros precisam deles fazerem? Consertar com o banco? Você tem uma ideia?
Sim, eles precisam, são quatro clientes que precisam de ser resolvidos.
Four more clients.
Just, just four more?
Yes.
I'm, I'm also.
Okay. Okay, no more questions from the board? Okay, yeah. And I just make an answer, we did have another scheduled at seven thirty. As you can see, it's going over. But we will complete this one and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, pra a gente se assentar, esperar ele resolver a situação.
Okay. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Please?
Unusual to be involved in one of these. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I'm not sure if any of you watched the Board of Selectmen's meeting that ultimately brought this business back to you for a new permit and so on and so forth. There was a real tangled mess that took a long time to sort out just for the Board of Selectmen. I believe, listening to what this person has said, the applicant has said this evening, she is determined to untangle the mess that was created by her predecessors. That's my personal feeling, I just want to express that to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience would like to speak? Do you want Kelly up here? Do you want to speak, Mr. Kelly?
No, I'm good, I take everything well.
You'd have to come up here.
Guess you are gonna speak now.
Michael Kelly, 54 South Old Road, Worcester, property owner.
Okay.
I learned of this whole mess a couple months ago. I think she's got good intentions to run it the right way. Did some talking with her about, you know, you can't sell unless you have the title, et cetera, et cetera. It's kind of new to her, but I think she's got the focus to do it the right way.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, I would ask that anyone use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak on Zoom. There are a lot of messages that have come in.
Wow, you can't read those.
I don't, yeah. So, does anyone on Zoom? Would anyone on Zoom like to speak? Please raise your hand first and then... I guess I'll pick one.
So they can use the hand, raise hand feature if they would like to speak?
Yes, or turn your video on and wave at us so that we can know that you're trying? I have one, I'm gonna try to ask, unmute and see if this person is going to... Nope. So I have a lot of messages on here, I don't know how, what are...
As far as messages, as far as...
I don't think you can read messages.
I mean, people that wanna ask a question or...
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of messages. I would like, if maybe some, if somebody asks to unmute so that you can read that into, read that into the record.
Yeah, if they wanna speak, they need to raise their hand and speak, so if you, because we...
While we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question for the applicant?
Absolutely.
Do you have, do you have hours of operation that you want?
From nine to seven.
Nine to seven? And what days are those?
Quase, just a semana, Sunday to Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday?
De sábado até cinco.
And Saturday only to five.
And, I'm sorry?
Saturday through five.
Saturday through five? So nine to five on Saturday, nine to seven Monday through Friday?
Nove a sete, segunda a sexta, no sábado nove a cinco.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're just gonna hold on to see if anybody would like to speak through Zoom?
I did just send out a message to raise hands to read comments into the record and I am seeing none. If you'd like to just turn your video on to show us that you would like to speak. If there's technical issues, that'll work too. I don't seem to be getting anything. I have ten people in the, eleven in the chat, or in the group, and I don't see any hands going up.
Just barely.
No, nobody.
Nobody?
Nobody.
Okay. All right, so if, if nobody's got their hand raised and I hear there's a lot of people on Zoom, but it doesn't appear any of them wanna speak. So with that, I bring it back to the board. I think I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I just, I'm not sure if it's most first, but I'd like, I personally would like to, you know, like to try to see it continue till I can see a, something, a piece of paper that explains that the business, you know, that the business is now, that has changed.
We can do that two ways. We can either continue it or put it in as a condition. Although you wanna see the document to make sure it's correct, right?
I'd like to see that there was some, some, some documents showing, you know, as a, either, you know, the partnership had been dissolved or that the partnership existed, the partnership had been dissolved and that, you know, truly there's a sole ownership here. I know it says in the Commonwealth, but I could easily do that myself. No, I, I, that's, that's, I need to understand that it truly is, all those former partners are gonna have nothing to do with this.
Okay. Okay.
I don't, I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think, I mean, if the Secretary of State says that the applicant is the owner of the business. I mean, I don't know what else we could do.
Well, again, if it makes you more comfortable, one of the conditions we could say is that they present a copy to Lisa. And as a condition, so it should be the same as what you're looking at in the state. But if they want to submit something.
Prior to a license.
Yeah, prior to the license, they have to come in with it. And you could review it at the office.
Okay.
All right. So what I'd like to do is see if we can take a motion now?
All right, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we will grant the special permit for eight, for twenty cars. Based on the, and with the hours of Monday through Friday, nine to seven, Saturday, nine to five, with the condition that there is proof of, of, there's some proof that the former partners are, are no longer, have vacated the business to her.
Okay. On the card, number of cards, I would just like, I, I think that maybe in my mind, thirty is more appropriate.
So I'm, I'm looking at going back because we determined that twenty was what was perfect for the, for the way, the condition of the lot at the time. The lot has not been improved, so unless the lot is improved, I don't see how, why, you know, additional cars being put on there. So I think one of the conditions we had before, I wasn't, you know, but before was that the lot would be improved. So they're welcome to come back and ask for more cars.
Yeah, they are. But I'm thinking about it through, you know, you've got to have enough variety in cars to be able to sell to different customers. And I'm thinking twenties, in my opinion, is a little bit low for a lot that size. I mean, fifty to twenty, less than fifty percent were down, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate, yeah, twenty, but I'm just putting my idea.
Okay, so what, what is your thoughts then?
I think probably thirty. It gives them a good start if they're doing that. They can, like you say, they can come back and ask for forty, or, you know, if they do and do pay more because they're selling more, they can go forward.
But even if she starts out with twenty, she has the capability of thirty, so she could ramp up that extra ten if she wanted to. Without having to come back. I can say, I'm open, you know, if you want to amend it, that's fine.
It's up to the board.
I had thirty at my head without, just from the beginning, I had thirty in my head since we talked about it. Just thinking that twenty with more, with ten more would give you a little wiggle room to.
So if you amend it to thirty, okay, so I'll amend it to thirty.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion on floor in a second. I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. That condition will be in there about the, the.
Showing that they.
Proof of ownership.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thirty cars would be for sale. So if they have employee parking, they can park behind.
Okay.
Okay. And with that. Did you hear exactly what we said?
I just want to make sure I kind of heard.
I'm going to read it. I'm going to read a number of conditions, but did you, I just want to make sure that you heard that. What we approved was thirty cars. And if that's successful and everything's going great, and you think you can handle more, or you do something with the lot to expand it. Then you can always come back to this board and request more.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I have a post reading to do. But I actually read another group of conditions that are going to be part of this. And then I'm going to point out two other things, so. The cars must be, yeah, must be placed twenty feet from Summer Street. Okay, that's the back, that's the closest they can be. A limit of thirty cars may be displayed for storage sale on. I'm not going to put that one. And those vehicles that are sale, are for sale shall be ready and maintain inspections as required by the Registry of Motor Vehicles. This will all be in your thing. All loading and unloading of vehicles will be done off-street for safety purposes. No parts, materials, tools shall be displayed or stored outdoors. No junk, as the term in hereafter defined, shall be stored or maintained out of doors. A used herein term junk shall mean any workout, cast-off, discarded articles or material which are ready for destruction, or which have been collected or stored for salvage or conversation to some use. The business hours for the car lot will be from, what did we say, eight? Yeah, nine to seven, Monday through Friday, and nine to five on Saturday. The petitioners shall conduct the business at all times in a manner so as not to be offensive to the residential abutis. The granting of this special authorization shall ensure to the benefit of the applicant and shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to another party. The permit will be subject to a periodic review by the Board of Zoning Enforcement Officer. If the restrictions noted as part of this granting of the permit are not adhered to or if operated in any way offensive or detrimental to the neighborhood, the board would ask the enforcement officer to begin the procedure to rescind the permit. The petitioner shall abide by all requirements of the Department of Public Works in the town of Lunenburg in the state of Massachusetts with respect to ingress and egress at the property. The petitioners must comply with the town of Lunenburg bylaw-regited signage. Any lighting shall not be offensive to any abutting properties. And the said Board of Appeals certifies that the decision attached to is a true and correct copy of this decision granting the special permit. I also have to read you, this, this will all be in this problem. This is a post decision. The special permit is granted with the contingencies that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed within the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board decision may appeal to Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. Any certification by the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it's been recorded. And with that, we wish you good luck with your cards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we go on to the next hearing. Yeah, I, at least, I think, just, just because there's still a lot of people on.
Okay.
I don't think they have to go through all the. Yeah, you don't have to go through all the stuff. Okay.
Good to go?
Yeah, we should be good to go. Okay, the next, Lisa's going to read the next application.
This is an application for a special permit, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Mark Bersh, Twenty Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg. And the undersigned hereby makes application as follows. A special permit to vary the lot width requirement per Section Two-Fifty-eight-point-three-B-two-D. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section Two-Fifty-eight-point-three-B-two-D. Street address is Eighteen Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg, Assessors Map Ninety-three, Parcel Sixty-four. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is the Bersh Living Trust, Twenty Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg. It's recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book One-O-One-Three-Five, Page Three, and recorded October eighth, twenty-twenty-one. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. A special permit issued by the ZBA, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, for dimensional variation to vary the lot width, is attached. The special permit. And that is signed on July first by Mark Bersh of Twenty Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg. Existing conditions, the subject property is located at Eighteen Buttonwood Place, which is known on Assessors Map Ninety-three, Parcel Sixty-four. The lot currently contains an existing residential dwelling and is located entirely within the Residence A zoning district. The property has frontage on West Street with secondary access through Buttonwood Place right-of-way. The property contains approximately one-point-one acres of land and twenty-five-point-four-eight feet of frontage, making it a pre-existing non-conforming lot with respect to frontage. A previous filing with the Zoning Board of Appeals modified the lot width through the structure. The Board of Appeals granted the special permit on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, which reduced the lot width through the structure to a hundred-and-fourteen feet. Proposed conditions, there is no change in the proposed law configuration, building, location, or lot width. At the time of the previous filing, the applicant was proposing to construct a single-family residential structure. The application was made, the public hearing was advertised, and the decision was issued referenced the proposed structure as a single-family structure. Subsequent to this decision, the applicant has determined that a duplex structure would fit the needs of the family in the future. As such, the application is being made to request that the decision be modified to include duplex in the narrative. Both single-family and duplex structures are allowed by right in the Residence A zoning district. Special permit criteria. A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, the proposed use of the property will continue to be residential. A new septic system in compliance with Three-Ten-CMR-Fifteen-point-zero-Title-V five will be constructed at the site. There is expected to be no noticeable change to traffic patterns related to the construction of the duplex at the site. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous, as it will not add additional traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, the proposed improvement, septic system installation, proposed duplex dwelling, and property line reconfiguration will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed project to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? The reply, the applicant assigned Damon McQuaid Architects to design the proposed structure. The duplex structure is a ranch-style home that is similar size to single-family dwelling that fits in with the architectural characteristics of the neighborhood. Architectural plans are attached. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of the property, use of adjacent property? And the reply, as mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be residential. The structure is being proposed in compliance with all zoning requirements and in compliance with the dimensional variation issued by the ZBA for lot width through the structure. And will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent property. And there's a letter attached dated July one to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillson Roy Civil Design Group to represent the proposed project at Eighteen Buttonwood Place. Respectfully submitted, Mark Bersh, owner and applicant. There's also a list of abutis attached, a copy of the deed, a field card from the Board of Assessors, a site plan, the building plans, and the previous decision from the board. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg Roy with Dillson Roy. I'm representing the applicant this evening. Mark is, is here this evening. I try to keep this really brief. I, I, at the risk of boiling this down too rudimentary, I think this is just a matter of wording when we came before you with the previous application about a year ago. So just to summarize, a year ago, we applied to your board for a dimensional variation to vary the lot width. And I'm, I'm starting the presentation here with the plan that we presented to you at that time. We, in the process of doing the survey work for this project, we determined that we needed to add the green area that's shown here to the subject property. For the purposes of upgrading the septic system. When we were doing the survey, we noticed that the, the Eighteen Buttonwood property was non-compliant with respect to the, it was actually over the lot line. So we did, at the same time, we determined that we wanted to grant the peach-shaded area from Twenty Buttonwood to Eighteen Buttonwood, so that we could make that structure more non-compliant. In doing that, we would have made the existing structure and the existing lot more non-compliant on, I keep forgetting, on Eighteen Buttonwood, so that the lower lot. We would have been making that more non-compliant with respect to lot width. That was the subject of the relief that we sought a year ago, and you granted that relief. So we effectively reduced the lot width through the structure. That application referenced the proposed structure to be a single-family dwelling. We applied as such, and you had language in your decision as such, that we, you granted the, you granted the dimensional variation, but it referenced it as a single-family structure. Fast forward a year, so we've recorded that decision. We've now, the lawyers have done what they need to do with the deeds, and they've, they've made all the, all the property conveyances such that we now have the, the new modified lot based on the decision. Nothing about that has changed. The only thing that's changed is that Mr. Bersh has now proposed a duplex dwelling instead of a single-family dwelling. And the building commissioner noted that the decision referenced it as a single-family structure. And so he asked us to come back this evening to your board to resolve that matter. So we are really just applying the same applications before, although you've granted the, the the dimensional variation. We're really just reapplying to change the wording from a single-family home to a duplex dwelling. Both of those uses are allowed by right, so it, it's, I, I guess I'd be remiss. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to throw fuel on the fire, but we really weren't applying in the initial for, for any use relief. We were, at the time, we had anticipated a single-family home. Now we're proposing a duplex based on what the Bersh family needs are currently and in the future. Neither one of those require any relief from your board, from a use standpoint. So it's really just, in our view, the way that we applied and the way that this decision was written and the building commissioner is uncomfortable granting the building permit, which has been applied for. So the, so that's why we're here, at the, at the request of the building commissioner. So the, uh, so that's why we're here, um, at the, at the request of the building commissioner. But I just want to re, we're not, we haven't changed the, um, configuration of the lot. The, um, the proposed duplex will still have the same lot width through the building that you granted, so we're not asking for any further relief on lot width. It's just literally, instead of putting a single-family structure, we're proposing a duplex structure in the same location. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So basically, what you're saying is you're just really going from a single-family residential home to a duplex?
That's correct.
The, the, through the house is exactly the same?
That's correct.
All of the setbacks, exactly the same? Everything with property lines, everything we discussed in the last time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Structure's in the same place. It's shaped slightly different, but it's, it, all the, all of the, all of the regulatory offsets are the same.
Okay. And I remember last time we talked about, there was a long driveway or something that came from West Street, and then there was, but the actual driveway would be Button, Buttonway?
That's correct. The, the, the legal frontage of the lot is actually on West Street, it's, there's a 25 and change frontage. We haven't changed any of that. Um, but the actual legal access comes from Buttonwood Place, which comes from, uh, Electric Ave.
Okay.
And so the, both the, the actual access and the legal frontage, none of that has changed, at all, from, from, even from before we filed previously. We're proposing the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions.
I don't have any.
I have none, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was just gonna clarify that the foundation, the foundation dimensions didn't change, that was about my only question.
Changed a little bit, but not...
But it's still not, you're not, it doesn't change the side setbacks and things like that.
Correct, that's correct. We're completely in compliance with, with, uh, dimensional, uh, requirements, yep.
Anything, Patrick?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Any, any public like to speak? None? Nobody's on Zoom?
Hey, all left you.
I am on an island by myself on Zoom.
What a surprise, okay.
Okay, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we modify the pre-existing special permit to change it from a single-family home to a duplex.
I have a motion in a second, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Aye.
And aye.
And aye.
Great.
With that, if it passed, I still gotta read you the...
Understood.
Post- and decision. Special permit is granted with the contingency that petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. Special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in the revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board decision may appeal to Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded.
Thank you.
Good luck. Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, Captain.
Get off Zoom. Stop recording, I was gonna say.